...week, that'll be an early dismissal for all our schools and we wish everyone a safe Halloween. The following week, the first week of November, remind everyone that Monday and Wednesday school will be in session for four days. Tuesday will be a professional development day for our staff and Thursday and Friday the district is closed for the teachers convention. Along with the county, we continue to monitor very carefully the outbreaks of enterovirus and the Ebola situation that's happening in our country right now, so we are monitoring it very carefully and the county has scheduled trainings for first responders in the hopefully unlikely event that we have that addresses us. Thank you, that's my report. The Policy and Governance Committee, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. The Policy and Governance Committee met last week and at the meeting we discussed several policies, three of which are going to be on tonight for first reading. We discussed policies under home instruction with health concerns, student intervention and referral services in the home or out of school instruction for general education students for reasons other than temporary chronic health conditions. All these policies were updated to comply with the changes that occurred in the administrative code and other law changes that have come down from the state of New Jersey. We occasionally need to update our policies in order to make sure that they are in line with that of the state. We also discussed some changes that are going to be coming forth next month to our policies regarding donations and advertising. We discussed this briefly last month. We are making a change to our policy regarding donations in order to make it clear that in events that are temporal in nature such as a run or something of that nature, that those are going to be considered to be donations, not advertising, so that we have a clear distinction of what advertising is, which is something that is going to be more long-term on the schools when we go through the advertising process. That's just to clarify any of the concerns we had when we were running for the first time, thankfully, our fundraising through the revenue generation run and the obstacle run that they did and some of the questions that came up regarding how we were going to monetize our assets and whether or not we were going to do so through selling ads through that particular endeavor in order to try to clean that up as we move forward and hopefully continue to raise more monies through these efforts. We didn't want to make sure there's a clear distinction between the two.
Mr. Senior Curriculum Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. The Curriculum Committee met on October 10th and we had four major topics in that meeting. The first was an update on our language arts curriculum from our language arts supervisor, Dr. Sue Tostie. We had a conversation about the second year with our new textbook and online component, which is going very well. It's also a major investment in staff time, professional development, and also in the textbooks and online curriculum itself. And the assessment is that K-8 is having a significant impact. In addition, the new curriculum, both the textbook and the online component, have allowed us to come into compliance with Common Core standards, K-8. And there was also a discussion in the language arts component about just how much writing we're doing at each grade level and how much of that writing has to be focused inside the language arts curriculum and how much of that could be focused in the other subject areas. After the update on language arts, we then had an update on the math curriculum from our math supervisor, Mrs. Julie Colby. Julie's had a very busy summer and is having a very busy start to the school year because it is the first year of our new textbook and online curriculum deployment. And also, at the same time we're deploying the new curriculum, we're also deploying a significant amount of new technology throughout the elementary schools, the middle school, the UES, and the high school to support the new textbook and online curriculum. And over the summer, there was a complete rewrite of the curriculum K-8 for math to bring not only the existing curriculum in line with Common Core, but also to reflect the changes and upgrades that we received as part of the new textbook and online purchase. We then had a discussion of the district professional development plan, which is a document that Carol Butler and her team spearheaded. It really had a number of important goals. The first was, how are we actually going to prepare our students for the technology and testing requirements that the state and other entities are asking us to adhere to? How are we going to provide the staff with the necessary training so that our students can be prepared? And then what are the specific goals, what are the specific action plans, and what are the specific measurements that we're going to use along the way to make sure that, number one, the staff is getting the training that they need, and number two, that the students are benefiting from that training? Our objective is to meet and/or exceed all of the standards and ultimately there will be a test, as it were, and that will be parked in the spring of this year, or in the spring of 2015, where we really will see the benefits of that professional development plan, but thanks to Carol Butler and her team for the work on that. And then lastly, we discussed a very fundamental change for the district, which is our new elementary report card. This is another major effort collaboratively between the administration, between the teachers, and also parents and other interested parties. The objective behind changing the report card was, number one, to bring it into compliance with Common Core, and number two, to actually come up with a new set of grading standards that are actually meaningful to the parents, meaningful to the students, and consistent across all of our buildings. There was a sizable committee created, a number of administrators, a number of teachers from each grade level. They did a tremendous amount of research in other districts and other report cards to understand what's been done essentially so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And the results of that report card were shared with parents, students, and with each level of administration along the way. Good news is, we have a new elementary report card and it is being presented to the board this evening for approval. And again, I'd like to thank Carol and that large team for all the work they did on the new elementary report card.
Any questions from that? The Operations and Facilities Committee met on October 17th. There are a few things that were on our agenda then that now show up on tonight's agenda, including a number of student field trips, I'll skip that until we come to that in the agenda. There was one request for a use of our facilities during the summer and that conversation about that also led us into discussing timelines, et cetera, for construction projects related to the recent past referendum. In any case, with respect to that facility request, it was for a very large event, hundreds and hundreds of people. And it was declined based on the fact that it is highly likely that we will be under construction in certain of the areas around the high school and the middle school, especially related to HVAC changes and roof requirements. And we also already have a number of users for our facility during the timeframe that they were requesting and these are people that we have a long-term relationship with, like Phillies Baseball Camp, some others like that, that we're not in a position to upset those arrangements, so we're hoping that we can work. This is an annual event on the East Coast, we're hoping we can work something out for the future when we get past this referendum phase. The two most critical elements with respect to the referendum are the retention of a civil engineer for certain parts of the project and a retention of a construction manager. So, they're going to be, likely to be on the agenda next month, right? After we've had a chance to go to bids, so to speak, and for the committee to interview and have our architects, et cetera, interview these people and to sign on the appropriate choice. So, those were the most significant items from our meeting. Budget and Finance, Mrs. Golding.
I have a question here.
Sure.
Just on the operations and facilities, have you talked about some of the reports that come out, are you going to be talking about mature fields at all or why not, what we're going to do with them going forward?
Well, our discussion at the meeting was very limited and it was primarily about the decision, is this something we want to do right away? Or, and there was some thought that, okay, we can get started with this right away. I believe the county's reaction to that was, number one, it has to be well-planned because you've got items like, you've got sports schedules, you've got graduation, that you want to plan well ahead of time, have our students, for instance, the junior class perhaps, if you were to do it next year, buy into how we're going to run graduation, et cetera. In the interim, the issue of what was on the NBC News report that suggested that there is some link between, well, there certainly wasn't a link for the people that were involved, but some link between the artificial turf, specifically the infill in the turf, and various forms of cancer, I think leukemia was the, was it, I'm not sure, I don't remember. And so that entered into our discussion a little bit, not that it wasn't important. By nature, we're a risk adverse organization. We're not interested in getting into something that we don't really understand. We have the time to understand what the issues are. And we will prepare properly, which will include some additional investigation and not only of the issue that has been brought forward with respect to how safe the infill in these fields is, and we'll do some additional investigation on alternative fills that could be safer. When we built certain of our fields, we made sure that the top soil came on site, it was tested, et cetera, before we let it put it down because, you know, the first truck might be good and the next 10 might be something else. So, we're very cautious with respect to that and I don't see that this project would be any different.
Thanks, Mrs. Golding.
Thank you. So, the Budget and Finance Committee met on October 13th and we discussed the preliminary budget forecast for 1516, what it looks like. We looked at the preliminary numbers that are in so far, the initial numbers based on our staffing, based on healthcare costs that we know, and other things. So, I believe Mr. Sugar will discuss this in a moment and give a presentation. We discussed the recap on the revenues for 2014, 2015. We had a summer enrichment program, which the committee reviewed the revenues that came to us from this program. We netted a profit of just over $24,000. Checking how it compared with our last five, four or five years, in 2010, 11, we managed to get $11,700. In 2011, 12, we managed to get $14,000. In 2012, 13, we managed to get $26,700. 2013, 14, $27,300, and this year, $25,600. So, we're in line and we look forward to next summer and getting ahead of it and trying to even find how to capitalize on that more so. We discussed the numbers from preschool and from our extended day kindergarten and we reviewed these numbers and the kindergarten participants and the tuition that was collected. And the tuition for the extended day program so far for kindergarten is $532,000 and the preschool, $147,500. We don't know exactly and we'll know by next month all of the expenses, that's, those are the gross numbers, so we'll know the expenses so I can give you a net report for next month. We discussed the extraordinary aid comparison. We looked at the applications that we give and what we receive and we looked at it and went back several years looking at it. As a matter of fact, the Garden State Coalition of Schools has requested that we do that and submit these numbers, which Moorestown has, so that we can compare what we're spending and what we're getting back. The revenue generation was discussed in the obstacle run and a recap of the revenues and expenses for the obstacle run. The run netted a profit of just over $8,400. Other things, just to review, so in full disclosure, the Lincoln, well, we had some advertising in our schools for $2,000, donations from $700 to $1,000, and a supplies fundraiser for our students and that netted $4,400 today. We also looked at the timelines and the sale of bonds. We're anxious to get out there and get this while our rates are low and we discussed the timeline for that and we're interested in moving very quickly so we can lock in at the lower interest rates. We're looking that the sale of the bond should occur in mid-November with the closing in early December. That's our timeline. So, are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. We're going to have Mr. Sugar do a presentation.
First, okay. Okay. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about next year's budget, which really is even part of the budget, right, because we just started moving here. And this is really very early, very preliminary numbers. These are just taking our 2014, 15 numbers and projecting these matters. This is not about taking requests or talking to teachers or committees or anything like that. This is just trying to get a feel as we go into next year of what things look like and where we might stand. We always try to do this around this time of year just so we can get an idea of what Like, we need a new cooker next year. Okay, so, all we did is we took our 2014, 15 numbers, we took our current staffing, and we projected those salaries into next year. We are in the last year of our labor contract, so that is very easy to do. You can take those numbers and just project into next year what those numbers look like. And then we just took our health benefits and we looked over the past couple of years how much those health benefits have gone up and we projected a 15% increase. Now, that's probably high, that's hopefully high, but just to get a feel for what that would look like. Now, what I did not do is I did not calculate chapter 78 numbers in accordance with that. I just took this year's numbers, net of that, and increased the health benefits number. In chapter 78, if you understand chapter 78, we're in the fourth year of chapter 78 and chapter 78 is the state requirement that contributions to health benefits be made and it was phased in over a four-year period. So, in the 2014, 15 year, you're at full implementation of chapter 78. So, what happens is, is a sliding scale. So, it literally is an individual calculation for each person, but we base on their salary and what level of benefits they have. So, we have not done that calculation with this. And in terms of all the other expenses in the budget, which is transportation, maintenance, supplies, anything that isn't salaries and benefits, we just let that number the same in 2014 and 15 for just our projections. On the revenue side, we had a 2% increase in the tax levy in our projections, but we left all of our other revenues the same and that's assuming that our state aid will be the same. That is making us some truth about how much fund balance we'll have. We won't know our fund balance numbers until next month after our audit is completed. So, again, taking those 2014, 15 numbers and just projecting them into 2015, 16. And you can see there, salaries, benefits, and other are our main expenditure categories that we break down our expenditures each year. And you can see the percentages of how much of our budget with each of those categories. So, really, salaries and benefits are 80% of our budget every year. And other fall, everything else that, you know, all of our others has to fall into that 20%. So, if we project those salaries again into the next year, we have a 15% increase in our benefits and then our other expenses, we let that number the same and you can see the breakdown there of what that looks like. On the revenue side, again, we left our fund balance number the same, we increased our tax levy by 2% and left all of our other numbers the same. And that is, assuming that we'll get the same amount of state aid, assuming that we will still have the extended day kindergarten and preschool programs and some of the other tuition generating programs that we have, we just left it all the same. At this point, with all those numbers put in there, we're looking at about a $1.1 million shortfall between our revenues and our expenditures that we will have to address.
Wouldn't that assume the 2% increase?
So, 15% increase in the health benefits. If you recall, for this whole year, the 2014, 15, we had a second year rate guarantee. Been with Aetna for two years now. We had a second year rate guarantee for this year. We do not have a guarantee for 1516. So, we're closely monitoring our claims experience and keeping an eye on that. We're talking to my, to our broker constantly about what are some other options, what are some different things we can look at, how do we try to keep our health benefits cost as contained as we can? And again, we are in the chapter 78 phase in and that's at 100% for this year. So, what does that mean to the individual? So, if we look at an individual, and again, as I told you, chapter 78 is literally an individual calculation for every person because it's based on their salary and it's based on the level of coverage they have. So, if we take a person that's making $65,000 and they have family coverage, the premium cost this year is $25,604. And according to that scale, and the scale, the percentage that the employee contribute goes up as salaries go up. So, if you're at the bottom of the scale, you contribute less of a percentage. If you're at the top of the scale, you contribute more and the scale goes up to 35%. So, we look at this situation this year in the 2014, 15 school year, that salary level for family coverage would be a 19% contribution from the employee that would be $48,000 that the employee is contributing towards the cost of those benefits. We project into next year with a 15% increase in the cost and the employee share would stay at that 19%, then the employee would contribute just about $5,600 towards the cost of their benefits. Let's talk about tax levies since that is a significant source of revenue in our budget each year. We look at our overall tax levy. There's two components to our tax levy. One is general fund and one is debt service fund. Debt service is already predetermined, that's based on past referendums and current referendums. General fund is the one that you used to vote on, general fund is the one that we talk about and we are talking about our budget each year. We look at our overall tax levy increase since 2010, 11. No increase in the overall tax levy in 2010, 11, 2011, 12, and 2012, 13. 2013, 14, we had a .4% increase and last year, we had a 3.8% increase. Well, how could we do that with a 2% cap? Last year, we used bank cap. We had that bank cap because in the previous years we did not vote cap. So, we used some of that bank cap last year to support our budget. Banked cap. So, we still have some bank cap left. We have $625,000 left from the 2012. Oops. There we go. So, from the 2012, 13 school year, we still have $625,000 bank cap left. We used $1.1 million in bank cap in 2014, 15, this year's budget. We used $695,000 cap from 11, 12, and part of the bank cap we had from the 12, 13 school year. That $625,000 that we have remaining from the 12, 13 school year, if we don't use it this year, we lose it, goes away, it's in the way. We still have $742,000 in bank cap left from 2013, 14. So, currently, we have just over $1.3 million in bank cap. In order to use bank cap, we have to go to the full 2%. So, you have to exhaust your 2% first and then you can talk about using bank cap. In order to use bank cap, we also have to have it approved by the county office. So, we have to come up with a rationale as to why we're using those funds. We have to submit that to the county office and the county office has to approve it. Let's talk about state aid. So, our state aid has been relatively flat over the past couple of years, slight increases. In the 2014, 15 school year, we saw two new aid categories, park readiness aid, they gave us a whole $10 per student to get ready for park, and per people growth aid. So, those were two new aid categories that we saw in the 14, 15 budget. Hopefully, they will continue into the next year. We also incorporated extraordinary aid in the 14, 15 budget. We had not done that in previous school year's budgets and we'll talk about that next. We won't know what our state aid is for this year until February, January, or March. Extraordinary aid, how come we don't use it? How come we don't budget it? Well, extraordinary aid is based on costs for specialty students that exceed certain thresholds. So, if you're in district, it's over $40,000 and if you're out of district, it's over $55,000. Problem with extraordinary aid is that we don't put that application in until well into the school year. For the 13, 14 school year, we didn't put that application in until May of 2014. So, we don't know how much extraordinary aid we're going to get. And it's a plot for the entire state and it's based on how many applications they get across the entire state. So, as you can see there, there's been times where we have applied for a lot more than we've actually received. So, last, for the 14, 15 school year, we budgeted $400,000 of extraordinary without knowing exactly how much aid we're going to get. So, we'll have discussions about whether that's something that we will continue for next year.
Mr. Sugar, you say we've applied for, that means we spent it and we applied for reimbursement on what we're entitled to receive, not really what all that we spent.
What fits into the category that they do.
That they will hopefully look at us for. I just want to understand that.
So, another thing that we always start taking a look at is our enrollment because that obviously has an effect on staffing and programming and everything else. So, what I did is I took the actual October, in October, we have our official student count, so the October 15 count, we just did it this past week, and I took a look at what our actual numbers have been over the past couple of years and I projected by taking those numbers and just bumping them up a grade level. So, projected for October 2015, I took our fifth graders and made them sixth graders and our sixth graders and our seventh graders, et cetera. The other preschool numbers and half-day numbers the same as this year, just so we can get an idea. And it appears as though we will continue to see that slight decline that we have been feeling each year as we go into the next school year. So, that's also something that we will be keeping a close eye on. We have conversations about enrollment from now until next September, what those numbers will look like and what we anticipate will be happening at our school. Any other questions?
I do. So, I have a question about the audit in particular. As part of our audit, do they calculate what we believe we should be getting in state aid and compare that against the relative decline that we get into other districts to determine whether we're getting the appropriate commensurate share so that everybody's being cut down to the same level?
No, we do not. That's not part of the audit process, that our auditors go through.
It's customary in any audit for revenue and expenses to be examined, so why don't we examine revenues?
We do examine revenues, but they, when they're doing our audit and if they want to look at revenues, they're going to look at fluctuations in other areas. They're not going to look at fluctuation in state aid because basically, they tell us what we're going to get and that's what we receive. So, it's not an area that they would spend a lot of time on. So it's not an area that they would spend a lot of time on and look at extensively because...
There is a formula.
There is.
And so the question is, if the formula's being applied, the same for everybody, but we're being disadvantaged by taking a deeper cut, would that be grounds, obviously, for going to the state and obviously claiming there's a little discrimination against the districts?
We can certainly look at that. Now, there is a formula. Whether they're adhering to that formula is another question. I've often been told each year, well, watch out, everybody, because next year, your state aid's going to be based on your enrollment. But even with climbing enrollment, we've been held harmless, basically, in that area. So I think you could certainly make an argument for that. But whether or not they're going to listen to that or entertain that, I don't know. I know that we've made some efforts in that area. I know that we've had some meetings with people trying to plead our case, looking at how our demographics have changed over the year in terms of free, reduced eligible students, special needs students, and things of that nature. But, you know, unfortunately, I think that when they also factor in and look at those state aid numbers, they look at a district income factor. And I think unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, you know, we fall into an area where, we fall into a category where, you know, our district income is a large number and therefore our state aid is affected by that.
So I'd just encourage us to always look at what we should be getting through the formula and comparing that against like districts in terms of what they should be getting versus what they're actually getting. Because I realize that for the most part, it is getting less than what is being calculated. The question is, how much of a disadvantage are we?
That's one of the focal points, Mr. Powell, that Garden State Coalition Schools has asked for this information so they can look at suburban districts in particular, are perhaps being shortchanged and the reimburse need extraordinary aid.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Sugars?
Just actually this one. So on enrollment, certainly our enrollment changes throughout the year. And the thing that's probably unpredictable is what our kindergarten enrollment will look like for next year, those numbers. But in looking at the transition years from the eighth graders moving in and the twelfth graders moving out, our enrollment at the high school is actually increasing. And our enrollment, if I've looked at that quickly, and our enrollment at the middle school will be decreasing. The UES will be approximately similar, slightly decreasing. But I'm not seeing any huge swings. So I just don't want to, you know, it's, we're not losing a hundred students in each of these buildings.
No, we expect to have a gradual decline. We've been managing it for the past couple of years.
And a gradual decline may or may not impact the number of staff required, because it could be spread out.
Can be spread out to the point that if you lose one fifth grader, lose one, you know, issue doesn't transcend into bodies. So it's something that we always keep an eye on. We feel like, I think we feel like we're active deals at the elementary schools. So it's interesting to kind of see the numbers and yet, you know, feel the reality of it.
All right, can we move on? Mr. Powell?
Okay, so the technology committee met on September the eleventh and a number of items were discussed. The first was smart board installation implementation. And after an early delay from the manual action begin the year, the installation of one hundred and forty new and the relocation of six existing smart boards is nearly complete. There's twenty-five left to go, spread across the US, UES, Baker, and Robert School. The committee also discussed the purchase and availability of pre-packed smart board courses for kindergarten through sixth grade. Teachers have access to this content for use in their classrooms and over time will add custom content for their own classes that they may also share with others. And the possibility of making both the package and the custom content available to students outside of the classroom to enhance their learning and give them other opportunities outside of that setting is also discussed and will be a topic in our next committee meeting, which is tomorrow morning. One-to-one pilots, there are currently two one-to-one pilots in the district, with the first covering grades nine and ten for language arts and approximately one-third of middle school students across all areas of learning. All of the one-to-one laptop pilot teachers at WHAMs have the laptops in their rooms and are using them with students. The high school pilot laptops were delivered to the ninth and tenth graders' language arts rooms on the seventeenth. And the committee also discussed the importance of identifying benchmarks against which, of course, these are pilot programs, can be measured for expansion or potential expansion of the initiative in the near future. And to that end, I understand that a sample, a survey of teachers and students has been or will be conducted on a weekly basis going forward throughout the school year. And also a visit to a district who already implemented a one-to-one program across the entire district for several years is being planned to gather additional information. Google Apps, which has been standardized across the district, has been adopted. It's a set of cloud-based applications. It's a platform, really, to help our teachers create and organize their information assignments more easily, provide feedback, and better communication with their students. By housing all of our content communications in the cloud, there's a number of obvious benefits to teachers and the students. You have the ability to include documents in a drive in the cloud, Gmail for communicating. And at this point, there's been a fair amount of data that's been collected over the last seven days, I'm told. There are currently over a hundred and thirty thousand stored documents in our version of the platform or cloud. So obviously, it's a strong growing use there. And there are over twenty-two hundred active accounts in the district. The committee also discussed and requested that administration provide an update in the next meeting regarding the availability and use of some of the content here that may currently be restricted to students, once again, available on a more livable basis outside of classroom hours. In professional development, Ms. Butler provided a committee with an update on professional development for the smart board technology, Google Apps. And approximately two hundred and thirty teachers were trained over the summer. And at this point, virtually every teacher should have been trained in this particular platform. Additional baseline reinforcing advanced training was scheduled for late October and November. And the committee is, asks as to the availability of on-demand training for our staff and students for reinforcement as well as for people who need to catch up or just missed out. And we encouraged the administration to go ahead and develop additional materials and to capture the information that is going to be delivered during October and November and make that available for offline or online, but I know we'll get a training. Online learning, the committee also discussed this type of learning from a couple of different perspectives. The first was the possibility of establishing a mechanism by which classes could be conducted throughout the district in the event of a school shutdown or closure or extended days when inclement weather keeps us out, as it did last year. Second was the possibility of offering online courses to our student body in the district. In both cases, obviously, there's a number of policy, technology, and other issues that need to be considered. And the committee encouraged administration to continue to investigate such possibilities and consider at the very least pilot programs for the second half of the school year. And hopefully, we'll get an update in the next meeting as well. Any questions?
Revenue generation committee.
All right, moving on, revenue generation. So the committee met again last week with administration just to address several residual issues. David mentioned one of them that affects and is affected by policy a moment ago. And also to talk of a narrowed set of activities for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. We first discussed a small set of sponsorship categories and prices that would be appropriate to offer without going through a formal RFP process. And the intent here is really to streamline the process within a known framework so that everybody understands pricing and what is being offered. So it's really a narrowing down of the types of opportunities we had on our list before. Anything that falls outside of that particular set that we're talking about now would then have to go to an RFP or to a more elongated process. But under the current structure, these streamlined set would get, hopefully, approval from the superintendent. It would then go to the board for a straight-up vote yes or no. The four that we're pursuing are hallway sponsorships, website advertising, cafeteria sponsorships, and gymnasium sponsorships. The latter two would be non-exclusive. We're also introducing on the ballot today, two of the fun-run sponsors for sponsorship approvals, specifically those two thousand dollar owners, Bell Four Property Restoration and Care One, would be considered for hallway in lieu of classroom sponsorship. So it's a swapping there essentially, and both are on the agenda this evening. We also discussed usage of the district's platform for mobile and web-based giving. Our stated goal coming out of that meeting is to add a reference for all of district events. We want to be a lot less parochial about this, so it's not just for internal use, but for clubs and other activities. We want a platform by which they can solicit and collect fees without having to go through establishing their own separate platform. They'd be able to use what the district already has. This could be boosters, classes, it could be different organizations anywhere in the district. It's already been used to process payments. We used it for the fun run, by all accounts, it worked well, even though that's actually not its intended use. But Jeff was clever enough to find a way to make that work for us. And obviously, we think there's a lot of potential in the district for such a platform. Couple of other agenda items, discussion on how value-added, fee-based services, examples would be pre- and post-student care throughout the district, and fostering and developing a robust alumni organization and giving campaign. We'll not discuss the time constraints. We will take them up in the next meeting, which we're looking to schedule for early October. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Semien, the Rec Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Michler. I was not able to attend the Rec Advisory Committee meeting earlier this month because I was traveling for business, but I do plan to be at the meeting on, I believe it's November sixth. That's not the right date, but I will be in November.
Next meeting. Mr. Semien.
Thank you, Mr. Michler. The speak meeting was held on October ninth. Mr. Tate spoke in detail about the trainings that are going on in the district for dyslexia and assistive technology, behavior management, crisis prevention, and training to help children. There was discussion about PARC and about students who previously have had the ALP will now take dynamic learning module exam. The, and with PARC, part of that is the use of technology and that students will have the ability to work with that technology before taking the exam. There also is lengthy discussion regarding after-school clubs and sports opportunities for special needs students. The feeling of the group was to create after-school opportunities on school grounds and perhaps get students from interact involved. And so Mr. Lasbrough in the back, so I thought I'd mention that. The next meeting is being held, it's a planning meeting for the speak conference, so that's not an open meeting, is that correct? And so the next open meeting will be December the eleventh.
More Arts, Mr. Powell?
Thank you, Ms. Michler. A few updates. The recent autumn in Moorestown, More Arts was a participant in a number of different ways. First, they coordinated music performances throughout the day, which included Moorestown High School students, alumni, and the Madrigals and other vocal community groups. They also promoted the Fall Play, Much Ado About Nothing, which will be performed this week, starting Thursday. It's Friday and Saturday as well, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, in the high school auditorium. And they also offered a children's fall craft, but was unable to display the K through twelve art exhibit due to rain that occurred throughout the day. More Arts will work with the district art teachers to provide the opportunity for students to display their artwork at the next More Arts event, which is the Holiday Arts Festival on Saturday, December sixth, following the Lions Holiday Parade. And finally, More Arts is soliciting sponsors for their fundraiser in Evening Music and Fine Arts, which will be held on Saturday, January twenty-fourth, from seven-thirty to ten-thirty P.M. at the Community House.
Case, let's get this. Home and School, Garden State Coalition.
Yes, so Home and School would like me to please thank everyone for their support of the apparel, the gift wrap sales, as well as the coupon book sales that we all helped with. And they would like me to announce, please, that the student directory is being compiled and should be out for viewing by mid-November. They also would like me to thank very much for those of you who were in attendance last night. They helped co-sponsor with the League of Women Voters, the board candidates and their forum. So they wanted me to thank everyone who came for coming. Any questions? Okay. So the Garden State Coalition Schools met on September seventeenth. Brandon Pugh and Mr. Ream went with me to hear what was going on in the state. We had a guest speaker, Barry Erlichman, who is the New Jersey Department of Education Chief Performance Officer and Assistant Commissioner of Data, Research, Evaluation, and Reporting. And there was a lot of discussion about PARC testing and how it would be done and carried out and what the schools are concerned with in regards to the additional costs encumbered by this new testing and how it would affect teacher evaluations, how it would affect student evaluations, all the different things. And then the nervousness of the state in general with public education going to this. So there were a lot of questions. It was a frank discussion and a lot of questions and answers. We also discussed the different areas that Garden State Coalition Schools would like to put as their emphasis for this year's initiatives. One of them is school funding and special education and the cost and the reduction of categorical aid, the reduction of extraordinary aid in contrast to rising cost, the per pupil expenditures increasing with exorbitant cost, and the need for perhaps students and tuition being paid. The cost of litigation, the impact of unilateral placements, the legal fees involved. There's a large discussion about continuing to examine charter schools and the funding methods that drain public schools disproportionately. We discussed Title I funding, and that will be an emphasis to look at with restrictions impacting PARC compliance and readiness. We discussed the growing issues of schools with changing student populations. The School Funding Reform Act and why it's not fully funded and the implications for that. And then we discussed chapter seventy-eight. There was a lot of looking for the future about assessment, about teacher and learning, and about teacher evaluations, the implications, and special ed and school choice. So these are all the things that are going to be the initiatives. Our next meeting for Garden State Coalition Schools will be at the New Jersey School Board Association Conference, which is next week. Their meeting, Garden State Coalition Schools, I believe, is meeting, is it Tuesday or Wednesday? Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday from twelve-thirty to two on the fourth floor. And there'll be guest speakers, some Republicans, some Democrats, all coming to speak about education. So if any of you are interested, that's when they'll be there, and that will be the next meeting. So any questions? Thank you.
I'm going to open the floor for public comment. If you raise your hand, yes, sir, please.
Hi, Don B. Palco, six oh one McElwee. I have a couple of questions on three topics, and actually, I thought I'd start with Lynn because we covered the budget. Lynn, just so I understand, obviously, a few of us that are running were in your place last night and had some questions regarding CAP. Two percent cap, I mean, is a property tax mandate from the governor. It applies to both township council budget as well as school, correct? So if we have township council, say, for example, didn't need any money, they had a zero percent increase, does that mean that the Board of Ed could actually take use of that or not? Okay, so both come out of our pocket, but we really get bucketed individually?
Correct.
Okay. So on a sixty-five, sixty-three million dollar budget, basically, we have a one point three million dollar max before we're above CAP, right?
It's just every million dollars. It's just on the property tax piece, not the entire budget.
Okay. But I mean, as I saw the budget, I mean, because I guess a couple of questions on that. Is that going to be public soon or on the website?
We can put it on the website, I think.
That's great, and I thank you for doing it. You know, looking at it real quickly, you said it takes into account teachers' salaries for next year. Does that also include escalation on steps? So is that all built in?
Is everybody moving up to where they should be by next year?
Okay, perfect, so that's all covered. And it also includes the fixed medical expenses that we currently have locked in, right?
We don't know what our rates will be for next year.
So do we have a June thirtieth, once our fiscal close?
Our contract expires June thirtieth.
Okay, so we're covered through the end of the school year, but not September fourth, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Of the teachers is going to dictate that increase. It was a rude awakening for me and my companies to see the significant impact. So I'll tell you guys right now, I'd be highly surprised, I'm looking at, like you're saying, you're going to probably be around 3.8% just in what you're budgeting. I'd add another percent at least. So that's going to be a massive, massive impact. I try to communicate that when we're talking about all this other stuff, but everything else is really just noise, doesn't really matter. 80% of the total budget, it's going to be a driver for the fixer, they're behind there The referendum, so we passed a referendum, even though we said, hey, your taxes are going to go up if we pass it. If we don't spend that total pot of money, and we value-engineer some of those components down, can we reduce, I mean, how's that debt service incurred? Do we go out and bond the total amount, or do we do incremental bonds as we go forward?
We're going to bond the total amount only because the interest rates are so low right now, we don't want to take a chance on those interest rates going up. Whatever funds we don't use, should we get to the end of the project, gets refunded to debt service. So we'll go back to pay off.
Okay, so we'll pay off that.
Correct.
So what is the timing of that, out of curiosity, when that bond would go forward? Before the end of this year?
We are hoping for a mid-November sale and an early December closing. So we were like the first ones to call and say, let's go and let's move on this.
So when you go and get that bond, are you including the contingency and the engineering fees as well?
Yes.
Bob did that presentation. Because I think he might have had 10% in there for engineering, and engineering on $43 million shouldn't be, I mean, maybe it should be 1%, in my opinion.
We're bonding our local share. So we're bonding the 29 million, which is our local share.
Okay.
And then the state is providing the rest.
Right, the state is providing the other. But again, if we value-engineer that down, I mean, my goal would be to compress, get everything that you guys have asked for, for the no-net tax increase. So get $42 million worth of value for $37 million. And we know that there's a lot of fat in there, and there's projects, and Bob, and you guys had a short period of time to put together a list, and I was quite impressed that that many capital projects could put together in such a short period of time.
We also used a 3.5% interest rate in our projections, and it's probably going to be closer to 3. So that'll affect that tax impact as well.
So the time sequence is you're going to bond it, and then we're going to go through a process where we're selecting engineering firms, construction managers, et cetera. And then those folks will put together a master schedule for implementation of all these projects, impacts, we talked about turf field. I think the last question I had, since it was brought up, and I happened to spend half my day today, we talked about a ball, it's a popular subject. I'm actually, I'm an environmental engineer, actually, I'm a civil engineer, professional engineer. My firm does radiation for Fortune 500 clients across the country, we do facility decon. I actually was on the phone with a private school today, who has put together, essentially a response program, have quite a few international students that go there, so there's a lot of traveling while on the holidays. And again, my professional opinion on the matter is we have a 0% likelihood of having any impact because it's points, a lot, whole lot of zeros, rounds to zero. That being said, does the Board have an environmental liaison or a point of contact that serves as a voice from the Board to communicate with Department of Health, DEP, various state agencies? Do we have emergency response plans in place, contingency plans?
We rely heavily on the county for that. There's nobody on the Board that's liaison, but that's an administrative responsibility.
I mean, I heard about the drama, the MOLK situation last year, and I would highly recommend that that's something that someone gets assigned, because it's an important committee. We talked about the safety of the kids, you know, Bob's presentation, we're putting in new doorways to kind of prevent visitors coming in, but, and again, I'm totally not at all worried about the ball, but the reality is flu, influenza, enterobias, the things that we're talking about, those are very common. And certainly, I lived it last year, my daughter got a very common strain of pneumonia. There's very basic things we can do as a township, education to the janitorial staff and how they conduct cleaning. You know, we talk about capital improvements, all I can think about today is, we're putting a new turf field in, how do we put a pop of UV lights in all the bathrooms? And then, you know, every night, basically, they're fully disinfected by the next morning. That could probably cost $50,000 bucks. I mean, there's very practical things we can do, that'll decrease the amount of cold, flu, influenza that spread. I think we had some pretty significant callouts the last couple of years with the flu, and it's getting more serious, so it's just something to think about. The Department of Health is virtually useless, just, you know, I wouldn't rely on anything they're doing. I would recommend probably considering retaining some form of a response firm, you know, just to provide you support, or at least, you know, some kind of level of environmental support in the future, again, minimal cost. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our agenda. And Mrs. Shutter, the Business Administration.
For your approval tonight, we have the financial report to the Board Secretary from July and August 2014, the treasures report for the month of June, and the cafeteria report for the month of September. We also have the resolution of Board of Education's monthly certification budgetary major account fund status.
So move.
Second.
Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
I recommend the approval of budget transfers for the month of August and September 2014 attached as Exhibit 15-102.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
I recommend the approval of bills in the amount of $9,319,661.88 attached as Exhibit
Motion, please. Second. The second, please.
Second.
Are there any abstentions, Mr. Semien? Yes, Mr. Michler, abstained. Okay. And any questions on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please. And there's one abstention. Mr. Reed.
Okay, first is the policies and procedures. First readings on the following policies, 2412, home instruction due to health condition, 2417, student intervention referral services, 2481, home or out-of-school instruction for a general education student for reasons other than a temporary or chronic health condition. I recommend that the Board enter on first reading these policies.
So move.
Second.
Any question? These are all what I would call mandated, or somebody's home thrown?
They're all mandatory policies, and as reflected earlier in my report from the Policy Committee, they were updated to reflect changes in the Ministry of Code and other laws in the state of Jersey in order to bring our policies in compliance with those changes.
Any questions? So these will be back on the agenda of Thanksgiving?
Yes, exactly, for the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yes.
And?
And they're on the website, if anybody wants to look that.
Okay, and the various affected groups have been notified of these policies, and providing some comment?
I know that, I think these are all pretty much, if I recall, they're on the website, I don't think we have one on next year to reach out to any particular group on these, these are, I feel most of them are still, it's not, what's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
Special education out of district placements. I recommend that the Board approve the student placements listed as Exhibit 15-105.
Unless there's an objection, why don't we put all these placements together? Number one through six under the educational program.
Second.
All right, now, does anyone have any questions about the special education out of district The placements for the alternative high school? The placements to Broadtana Institute of Technology? The in-district special education placements? The home instruction? Or the homeless placements? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
Special education services contract, I recommend the Board approve the agreement attached as Exhibit 15-111 with My Own Two Hands LLC to provide related services to a student in and out of district placement.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
Another special education service contract, I recommend the Board approve the agreement attached as Exhibit 15-112 with Moorestil's Rehabilitation Services, Inc., to provide related services to a student in and out of district placement.
Second. Questions? All in favor?
The professional development plan, which was spoken about tonight, I want to recommend that the Board approve the 2014-15 professional development plan submitted in Exhibit 15-113.
Questions?
Just a comment to say thank you again to the teachers and administrators served.
Say good good. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
I too say thank you tonight. Elementary report card, another group that has recommended, I recommend that the Board approve, the 2014-15 elementary report card is submitted in Exhibit 15-114.
So move.
Second.
Questions?
Likewise, a comment of thank you.
And on this, while this is teachers and administrators, my understanding is that there were representatives from each of the schools of home and school that also gave feedback. So thank you. I just, on that, we do have, just as we have speak and pace, we also have committees in each of the school buildings that are a resource, and they are comprised of parents, and there's a mix of parents from these organizations as well as other parents from the building. And those are good opportunities for us to use a mixed group for feedback as well. So any opportunity we could do that, instead is one of our, it's a good opportunity, and it's also one of our obligations, that would be good.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
I thank this committee also. Student field trips, I recommend that the Board approve the student field trip destinations for the 2014-15 school year is listed in Exhibit 15-115.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
Overnight student trips, I recommend that the Board approve the overnight trips listed below and detailed in the attached Exhibit 15-116.
So move. Second.
Any questions about these trips?
Are these staying overnight?
That's my understanding. The only other comment that came from our committee looking at this is that the teacher-student ratio was kind of high, but we know that when they go on these trips, they're surrounded by educators from all sorts of schools, and everybody ups out with their fellow educators, so.
It's only two adults, right?
Well, there's two from our school. Right.
Right, available to them?
Yes. But it's like 21 to 1, or something like that.
I think there were 28 students.
Yeah, something, yeah. But it's not like they're going someplace where those are the only two adults within 50 miles, so.
I would say that that's not a high number, just from experience, from having a child go through that program.
You think they could handle 30 schools?
Are you saying there should be more or less?
I'm saying, in other circumstances, where they weren't traveling to where there were all these other schools and all these other educators at the same time, I'd want to see something where there were more chaperones.
More chaperones, okay, thank you, I thought you were saying the opposite.
They call that a road trip. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please. All right, back to the finance and business.
Travel expenditure approval requests, I recommend that the Board approve the travel expenditures requested attached as Exhibit 15-117.
Submit.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
Back-to-school obstacle run gold sponsorship, Mr. Powell referenced this in his revenue generation report. If you recall, back in August, we approved a gold sponsorship for the back-to-school obstacle run as a sponsor at the level of $1,000, with a logo on the event T-shirt, and event marketing materials, and an advertisement on the MTPS website for six months. A resolution is requested approving the addition of the following to that gold sponsorship, a three-year commitment for naming rights of a hallway at the high school.
So move.
What does that mean?
It means similar to the sign that was approved in last year's school year, or Magic Tech, maybe a similar sign for this particular sponsor.
So when I think of naming rights of a hallway, I think of the sign that's up on the corner that tells you what the hallway name is.
It doesn't replace that, but it's not dissimilar in terms of size.
And you had, Mr. Shutter, if you had given us a, you had given us a, an example that these signs are all going to be uniform?
Yes.
So it's not, there won't be disparate signs, so it'll be?
Yeah, the idea would be similar color, so using our school colors and similar in format, where both the Moorestown logo and the sponsor's logo is on the sign.
And just out of curiosity, Mr. Satin, are you going to probably decide that this is going to go within the school? Do you maintain the same hallway that you currently have, or are you going to plan other hallways?
Well, I have two opinions.
Do you mind sharing?
Well, the current hallway I have, I think the G hallway, or the current sign, has similar shapes to the high hallway.
Equivalent to where the current sign is?
And one last question. So the three-year commitment, is that there, an amount that's paid each of the three years, or is it one amount that's paid and it's a three, our commitment is three years?
This is an exception. The original intent was for it to be what was referred to at the time as a classroom sponsor, which would be a small block for the classroom. I think there was some discomfort with some people on the board and probably outside of being inside the classroom, so this is a special accommodation for this particular case.
So it's a $1,000 per year for three years, or $1,000 for three years?
One time, three years, $1,000 per year. That would not be customary.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? President, please.
Gold sponsor for the back-to-school obstacle run, we approved Bell for Property Restoration as a gold sponsor at the August 12th Board meeting. We're also requesting the approval of Care 1, pending receipt of payment, as a gold sponsor for the same obstacle run that was held on September 7th.
Motion, please.
Submit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of grant agreements, a resolution is requested accepting the following Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act, Section 15 grant agreements for regular operating districts with the New Jersey School Development Authority. This is for our upcoming capital projects.
So move.
Second.
Can we put four, five, and six together?
We can. So the other two are?
I have such a wish.
So move.
Second.
All right. Questions on four, five, or six?
So these are required resolutions for this School Development Authority. One is the execution and delivery of the grant agreement, and the other is to authorize the business administrator to supervise the project. That doesn't mean other people won't be supervising it as well.
Right, it'll be plenty of supervision.
Yes.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Post? President's side.
Contract for copiers, last month we approved, um, a copier, and we had the wrong band size for one of the copiers at the UES. So we want, just wanted to have a, um, correction, um, for that contract from the, um, 3/29/30 per month to 3/7/5/30 per month.
Can I have such a motion please?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? President's side.
Well, this is also related to the, uh, recently approved referendum. I recommend that the board approve the resolution determining the form and other details for the $29,130,000 school bonds of the Board of Education providing for their sale as per the attached exhibit 15-118.
Second.
Questions? So, you said by mid-November, would, would we have something to approve at the next board meeting?
Uh, hopefully a successful meeting.
Yeah, okay.
If the timing is right.
Um, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? President's side.
Uh, the Bioda Nursing Services, I recommend the board approve Bioda nurses to provide professional services for the 2014 school year for contracted school nursing. This is primarily for substitute nurses, and, uh, this contract, according to my solicitor, needs some changes, so it will be pending solicitor review.
Motion?
Second.
Questions?
I'm gonna have to stand, Mr. Schuler.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
President's side, one abstention, let's go.
We have two additional donations that have come in since our last board meeting for the back-to-school obstacle run. One is from the National Karate Institute in the amount of $300, and another from TD Bank in the amount of $500.
So move.
Second.
Any questions?
Um, yes. How is this different than what we previously approved?
These are not ethical, um, sponsorship, so these are a lesser dollar amount, so, um, they're just, at this point, they're just donations.
They don't get assigned. I mean, in the building.
Right.
So, if TD Bank, um, would we be reaching out to TD Bank or, or the National Karate Institute to see if they wanted to increase their donation to?
Mr. Penn, I think you're right.
I would certainly encourage.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? President's side.
Uh, we have a donation to accept, I recommend the board accept the following donation attached as exhibit 15-120.
Second.
Questions?
Is there, um, a standard by which we'll be using this type of technology with a, with, is it just, just necessary for this team? Or is this something that other teams could benefit from?
Well, normally other teams, remember, in football, you have coaches up in the press box, and you have coaches down on the field, and that's how they communicate from headsets. There's really no other fields put it up, I'd say. But if they did, you would hope that they would share them, if there was a, yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? President's side.
Private schools' child nutrition program. Uh, I recommend that the board approve following resolution regarding student lunch programs in private schools for disabled students. This one is for the Yale School North Campus.
Second.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? President's side.
Resolution is requested approving a one-year extension to the existing diesel fuel contract. This is for a state contract attached as exhibit 15-122.
Second.
Are we locking in a price now, or it's just?
No, it's just our, we can use it if we like, if we find a better deal, we can approve a different contract.
Okay.
Its prices are going down.
And how many times can we extend this same contract over, or is it, this is a state contract, it doesn't happen?
It doesn't really need that decision, not us. Uh, solicitation of requests for proposals.
Oh, we, we need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion, and so?
Okay, solicitation of requests for proposals, a resolution is requested approving the solicitation of requests for proposals for a civil engineering firm and a construction management firm for the upcoming school facilities projects.
Second.
Second.
Do we have a formal proposed hire pay?
We have a draft that we are working on to have out by the end of the week.
Let us see.
Okay.
So, uh, with respect to the construction management firm, they would be involved in all facets of the project, including the bidding, and how to divide up the bids, perhaps an alternate bids, et cetera. And the civil engineer, the, the two projects most specifically related to a civil engineer would be the, uh, the stadium, track, and turf, especially as it relates to stormwater management. And then we have a variety of parking lot, smaller parking lot jobs, they'd be involved in.
When would we try, when would we try to enter into this agreement? Is there a timeframe for this?
We're hoping, if we're hoping, after discussing it with O and F, that we would have something by the next board meeting.
It's good.
It's gonna be tight, because they'd want to be involved with the interviewing process, and it may be difficult.
We're not, I mean, procedurally, I mean, we, we, why are we kind of putting ourselves out as far as for construction days? Has there been any discussion that, I mean, these guys typically, especially construction managers, will be part of that discussion, and I'm just trying to figure it out, when we really need them on board.
Well, our architect's recommendation has been that they come on sooner rather than later because they're another set of eyes as you're going through the design process.
And who's drafting the RFP?
Uh, I have a draft one from our architect.
From our what?
From the architect. Has our solicitor looked at the RFP?
Not yet, because I haven't, need some changes and some things fixed, and then it was gonna go our.
I, I'd rather not vote on RFP, I didn't see, to spread it out, just personally, unless we're which one, I'm, I'm not comfortable with one.
Well, why do we even need to have a resolution to issue an RFP? Do we have to, Art?
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, right, I mean, I'd rather see what, if I can, if I can access it, I'm gonna see what they're saying.
So moving on, um, we don't need to have such a resolution at this time. We will have, we'll have an approval when there's a recommendation and, et cetera, so.
And the committee will be over, looking over there, or how is that?
Well, we've all expressed an interest in being part of the interview process, yeah. The, um, we have a number of employee relations items on pages 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and some information items related to that on page 16. There was an addendum, and, um, I think that's, is the, uh, well, we have this potential, can I deal with that potential contract argument for the licensing agreement in this batch of executive session items?
As we're going through with them, I?
We don't have to do it tonight? Okay. Uh, so the, the personnel items that I just mentioned, um, and there was an addendum, as I said. May I have such a motion?
So move.
Second.
And would you call a vote please?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Simeon?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Laja?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes. And may, we had some information items here, may I, um, have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? President's side.